Next time.
I'd like to call to order our town council regular session. And the time is 7:32. And if we could please all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, could we please have the roll call?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McIntyre.
Here.
Councilwoman Donnelly.
Here.
Councilwoman Healy.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members are present.
Thanks, Sue. I would just like to acknowledge a special guest in our audience tonight. We have our town council president from Narragansett. So welcome, James Callahan. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session February 11th, 2013.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have the regular session, February 11th, 2013.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us to licenses. We have a resolution granting a Victor Ling and Holiday Sales License to TLC Coffee Roasters, Kingston LLC, 100 Thornton Road, Unit 2, Kingston, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the fire chief. Application by Kenneth Marrett, 3362 Kingston Road, West Kingston, Rhode Island. And this is new, and it is continued from February 11th. Is Kenneth in the audience? Seeing none, we will put this further in the agenda, and we will come back to it to see if someone does arrive. License B is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the crazy coyote chase, 5K road race, and one-mile fun run on Saturday, April 6th, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. to the Broadrock Middle School PTO, 351 Broadrock Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event and Rhode Island Department of Transportation approval. Application by Karen Vineker, 61 Christopher Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Karen. Welcome, please come to the mic. And if you could just tell us a little bit about this race, that would be great.
Okay, absolutely. And thank you all for taking the time to let me do so. It's, may I come forward and pass these out?
Please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And our town clerk will need one as well, Susan. Thank you.
So I heard a little discussion as I came in about the ride itself, and I know there's been some discussion about it. And in fact, it is.
Karen, would you just pull that down on the microphone, so, okay, thank you.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. So in fact, we are sharing the same race route with the SK Cares organization that did the scares run back in October. We've gone in on the price of having that certified by the USATF, so we're excited about that. A little concerned about all the, concerned about the route, and we will address those safety issues. But basically, the purpose for our run is, from the PTO perspective, there's a lot of budget cuts in areas where we're not able to provide for our students. So we felt like this was a kind of a win-win. We get to raise money for our kids while we're also encouraging families in the area and working with the community to sponsor and support each other. So we're trying to build up good relationships all over the place. So that's kind of our goal. I'm happy to say that we've got a lot of good sponsorships in the area, a lot of the fitness organizations have stepped up. A lot of the different, different style of businesses are helping us out as well. So we've got a lot of nice attention. We're working with all of the schools in the area as well. And regarding the insurance, I've been in touch with the school board office and have been trying to contact with Mr. Rashat, who's the CFO, who, we're trying to see if they're, if the school's board insurance covers everything it needs to. We have not been successful in talking person, person to person on that. But that is something we've, obviously, will continue to do and want to wrap that up this week. So I don't know what the perspective is, at what point can I provide that to you, or...
Steve? She's been trying to contact John Rashat to find out the insurance. Do you have any further knowledge about that? Does the school department need to kick in with their insurance, or does the town cover it?
No, it would go through the school department. Most likely, she would be referred to the inter-local trust and would then be able to secure a tenant use for a one-day period, tulip insurance is what they call it, for the, for underwriting that event. So, but she needs to talk with Mr. Rashat, and he'll make the referral to the, to that carrier.
Okay. We've made several messages to him. Miss Sullivan herself has called him directly, and we've been working on it for a few months. I know everybody's busy and things are going on, but I just, I say that only to let you all know that we have been doing our part, but kind of don't want to be nags either and, you know, put a thorn in someone's side about something we're trying to do to benefit all of us. Are there any other questions I can address at this point?
Questions here at the table?
I think you said this was a sanctioned race. The distance is sanctioned by the national organization.
It is, sir. And I've got the actual information, I've got the certified courses here, I can...
Yeah, I'd love to see, or copy if you have it, or share it with Ella or whoever.
I'm sorry, but I only have one copy.
Oh, that's fine. Just...
It's on the back.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Other questions here at the table? Carol?
Karen, why don't you tell everybody the date and time and how much it costs to sign up and run a walk or whatever?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. It is on April 6th, and the 5K will begin at 9:00, and the one-mile fun run will begin at 10:00. There will be a lot of other activities as well. We've got rock spot climbing, who's, you probably are well aware, they're getting a business established here in the area. They'll come set up a rock wall. We have CrossFit Training is going to set up a children's obstacle course for kids to be able to enjoy. The YMCA is going to partner with us to provide childcare for runners who, you know, if there's a husband and wife that want to run, but they have a younger child, that's one of the features that we'll be offering as well, which is a free charge. The cost of running the 5K is $20. That includes a race packet, a tee-shirt, post-race hospitality, to include drinks and food and whatever entertainment. And then the 5, the one mile itself is actually $10. That also includes a shirt and a race packet and all of the other amenities as well. On race day, that price will go up to $25 for the 5K and $15 for the one mile.
Sounds like fun.
Thank you.
I just want, I think, have you discussed any of this with the chief of police and any of the issues regarding safety on the roads?
I can say that we have not spoken directly, but I have spoken extensively with Sergeant Gardner. We've talked on the phone, we've exchanged emails, I've gone to the, to the police department itself and spoken with her. In fact, before we had the course certified, because we didn't want to incur the expense if there was going to be a concern and it was going to get scrapped at the last minute, which is what I understand happened with the SK Cares run in October, was that they had to switch the route at the very last minute. And it wasn't a certified run at that point. So it was, it was a matter of, you know, kind of having to flip-flop. I know there was a lot of discussion about the directionality of the race, if we were going to go clockwise out of the school or counterclockwise out of the school, whichever direction. So we kind of just deferred to the police department and felt as if, you know, the direction that was going to help have things certified or have things approved, then we would go with that. So, and, I'm sorry.
Oh, Karen, the chief is here, and I think he's ready to say his piece.
Sure.
So why don't you come forward, chief?
How are you?
Good, good.
The applicant has interacted with Sergeant Gardner, part of my traffic patrol people, and during the negotiations, the applicant has agreed to hire a police detail, and we are going to designate an on-duty police officer at two different locations along the route. This is the same route that was approved some time ago at another race. We're taking a look at the racing situations around town. There are so many races being applied for, and now they're even including Main Street during Saturdays and Sundays, and we're beginning to take a hard look at it. But I'm comfortable that with the willingness to hire a police detail, and I am going to designate an on-duty patrol car along Soggett-Tecuhur Road, I think, I think we can make it work. And you have talked with Sergeant Gardner on a couple of occasions?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Versatile of them. Yep. That's about every method I could come up with.
Well, that settles that.
I try to be thorough.
Oh, golly. Karen, give me an idea how many people you expect to run, or give me an idea how many you had last year?
Well, this is a first-time run for Broadrock Middle School PTO, but the scares run, they kind of had a low attendance because that was at the time Hurricane Sandy was coming through, so I think that was part of their, why it happened that way. I can tell you that our goal, what we would like to see, is about 200 runners, maybe upwards of 300 if we're lucky. We do already have several people registered to run, so we're excited about that. We've kind of got a captive audience, being that we're working with the school in such a very well-connected area where everybody's very involved with community support, so, you know, and typically, people don't register for the run until the week before.
You know, till the last minute.
Right, exactly. But that's okay.
Thank you.
Karen, could you just elaborate a little on the sponsor a child to run a walk?
Yes, actually, that was an idea by one of our committee members. We thought it was a great idea. You know, you have sometimes people who just can't afford to register an entire family, or they can't, you know, a child wants to try a first-time run, but their parent might not want to take part in the expense. So basically, the sponsor a child element is if somebody wants to pay for a child to run, we were going to send that through our school's resource officer to pass on to any children in the school district who would like to run.
Great. Other questions here at the table? Meg?
I just wanted to say something that I commend you, because I see that your sponsorship, which I would expect would be local, you have a whole host of local sponsors who are supporting this event, and kudos to you and your team for going out to do this, because you have a good recognition from the community, and that's what's important to us here at the table. Well, I can't speak for everybody else, but, but myself and I'm hoping everybody else, you have a lot of local sponsorships, and that's what we all believe in, so...
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. We like to try to give the businesses an opportunity to, you know, show their support, because sometimes you don't see it on a broader scale with such a large audience, and so we thought this might be a good opportunity to open that up.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions here at the table? And I just want to...
Hi.
Sorry, Carol.
Go ahead.
You go.
Oh, no, I was just going to move the motion.
Oh. I just want to say that Broadrock Middle School PTO, the school itself, is very fortunate to have you as one of their parents.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
I move approval of new license B.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, best of luck.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for your time. I appreciate you at the race.
Maybe you'll get one of us out there.
I will. I may not run, I'll walk, maybe. Maybe I'll run by then.
Ella, before she weaves, the insurance trust, you can call 438-6511. Ask for, it will be Colleen Barzioni, an extension 512. 512. That'll be her direct line.
Which brings us to the public hearing. This is a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining citizen views on community development, housing needs, and program performance relative to filing a program year 2013, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant application. The town is eligible to apply for $300,000 in funds for the purpose of undertaking activities that meet one or more of the following three named national objectives. First one is urgent needs, two is prevention, elimination of slums or blight, and the third is activities benefiting low, moderate-income persons. Steve?
This is the first of two public hearings that are required for the town to become an applicant for participation in the federal Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. South Kingston has submitted applications since the program's inception in 1985 and has received funding each and every year since then. This year, just as in last year, we're able to apply for a grant of up to $300,000. This first public hearing is to provide public notice and to afford public input on different activity levels that could be incorporated into the grant that would address low and moderate income, housing needs, employment, prevention and elimination of slums or blight within the community. We have also sent out to the various resource agencies that have typically applied for funding under the CDVG program in prior years and advised them of the application term. Applications are due no later than March 5th at 4:30 in the Planning Department. Subsequent to the receipt of the applications on March 5th, the Planning Department, in conjunction with the Planning Board, will develop a first draft application for up to the $300,000 in funding level. Once that is endorsed by the Planning Board, it will then be forwarded to the town council for a second public hearing, at which time the council will be asked to review the priorities submitted within the grant proposal as prepared through the Planning Board and to direct the filing of the final application. So this evening, we're asking the council to solicit public input and to provide authorization to prepare a grant not to exceed $300,000 as outlined on the agenda.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions here for Steve?
Steve, if I'm not mistaken, we have had some requests that you have, unless I misread something in, in the packet that I received, but...
As I noted, we've sent out to all of the various agencies. So far, we've received applications for operation, operating expenses in the amount of $4,500 with Welcome House, $3,000 to the Community Housing and Land Trust, the $120,000 with the Resource Center, and Peastale Revitalization has asked for $12,000 for improvements with the Peastale Park and Art Center and the Arts Park. We've also got a fifth application that came in this afternoon from the Education Exchange for $3,500. So we're expecting that we'll see several more applications. We're also expecting that we'll be most likely soliciting for additional funds for the Housing Rehabilitation Program, which provides loans for code enforcement revisions in single and multifamily units that are owner-occupied. So at this point, we'll take the applications, we'll prioritize those, get it through Planning Board, and then back to the council for final approval.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for Steve?
I just didn't know if we put out second reminders, phone calls, what do we do with some of those who certainly have applied before and have the needs?
Planning Department will be in contact with them if they don't see the application. So yes, there'll be follow-up with it.
Thank you.
Ben, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything. I see you sitting on the edge of your seat.
The town manager's covered it. I would, one minor point, the applications due on the 4th, March 4th, not to exaggerate, but this is next Monday, closing business. We've sent applications to any entity that's applied for in the last five years, and plus any phone calls. We've also had a couple of inquiries from newer agencies that do nonprofits, and we've sent applications their way. And we've done that electronically and via mail as well, so we will, we're expecting more to occur. And many of the agencies that are applied to this town will, they have a regional client base, so they're likely, quite likely, could be applying in Narragansett or North Kingston or Charlestown or what have you. So, you know, the nonprofit group are very familiar with the timing and pacing of this, so we will be receiving more, and then we'll have to, you know, review and provide some thoughts as to the composition of the grant towards the $300,000 limit.
Okay, so again, the grant is due March 4th. All right, this is a public hearing, so if there's no questions here, I'm going to open it to any comments or questions from the audience. Seeing none, can we have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move we close the public hearing.
I second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And can we have a resolution?
I move that the town council direct the staff to prepare the program year 2013, the CDVG application, to undertake eligible activities in a grant amount not to exceed $300,000. Further, to authorize the town clerk to order for advertisement, a public hearing relative to filing the program year 2013, Small Cities CDVG application, to be held on March 25th, 2013, for the purposes of reviewing the draft application and obtaining citizen views on the proposed activities.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is communications. This is a communication dated February 6th, 2013, from Jean Wetlawfer, submitting her resignation from the Conservation Commission, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
Go ahead, Jim.
We're going to miss Jean. Certainly want to send a letter of thanks for her years of work on the Conservation Commission. She's obviously an established gardener, a wonderful person. We're going to miss her hard work on the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have a resolution adopted February 11th, 2013, by the Boroughville Town Council, and February 18th, 2013, by the Wind Socket City Council in opposition to House Bill 2013, House 5340, and Act Relating to Labor and Labor Relations, Responsible Contract Resolution Act, and any other legislative proposal that would mandate arbitration and contract continuation and expired teacher collective bargain agreements are received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
I move that we place this on file and defer our discussion to Communication D.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We also have a communication dated February 7th, 2013, from Dr. Victor and Kelly Fay Wolf, announcing that their son, Sean Fay Wolf, has attained the rank of Eagle Scout and inviting council members to attend the Boy Scout Court of Honor on April 7th, 2013, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
I would like to see us do a citation for this young man, as we've done with many others, and I move that... Who's going? I know you're going.
I have it in my calendar, and I will, I will contact the family if any other council would like to make it. It truly is an honor to be present. And in reading through this young man's profile of what he has done, he definitely has risen above a lot of his peers, so...
Well, then, without further ado, I also second. And I'll try and attend.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and congratulations, Sean Fay Wolf. Next is item D. This is a resolution adopted February 12th by the South Kingston School Committee concerning the allocation of technology funds by the Rhode Island Department of Education in opposition to legislation proposing mandatory binding arbitration and contract continuation for teachers, and in support of legislation moving the teacher's layoff notice deadline from March 1st to June 1st, 2013. This is Senate 049, and 2013, House 5066, Acts Relating to Education, are received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
Well, we discussed this at the work session, and we're in support of all the resolutions presented by the South Kingston School Committee. We'll take them one by one, I guess. The first one is that we agree with them that they should receive an allocation of $605,150 as part of the, excuse me, the technology funds from the Rhode Island Department of Education. They are in support of the bill so long as they receive that money, and I think we should do the same. We need the money to continue on with the technology that we've already started. So, next, keep going?
Yeah.
What? Maybe, it might be easier that way. So, that was my motion, that we support the resolution for technology bond.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yeah, we're not asking for anything more than our pro-rate share for the number of our students in our public school system, as we all thought when we voted last November.
Actually, this goes all the way back to the budget.
Even the budget, yeah.
That was adopted in May by the General Assembly. Because when they adopted the budget for the 2012, 2013 year, they included in their capital improvement program $20 million. That was for technology improvements in schools from the K through, through high school level. They also, at that time, when they provided the information of the budget, documented what each of the school districts would be entitled to as their fair share of the $20 million. And that's where the $605,150 number came from. Subsequent to that, there's been discussion at the Department of Education level that a reallocation of those monies may be more prudent, so that it would provide those school districts that have made little or no technology enhancements and improvements over the last several years for wireless access to be given a greater share. The school department, I believe the council as well, believe that, that this is contrary to what was the original vote through the General Assembly, and also the fact that the existing technology within the South Kingston school system is not adequate to be able to address the multiple access requirements that will come forward over the next several years as greater electronic learning sections are added to the various nodes within each of the schools. So based on that fact, the school committee had requested the council to provide their support in terms of asking the General Assembly representatives to ensure that they let the Department of Education know that South Kingston believes that it's entitled to the original allocation. That was a component of the budget document that was prepared last May.
Thank you. Any other comments here at the table? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. We do? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the second resolution sent to us by the South Kingston School Committee is a resolution regarding binding arbitration. They respectfully request the Rhode Island General Assembly to oppose and reject, reject any and all mandatory binding arbitration legislation currently being considered for teacher and other school employee contracts. Those bills are House Bill 5340 and Senate Bill 0364, and I move that we support our school committee in opposing those bills.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The third resolution... The third resolution from the South Kingston School Committee is a resolution on contract The school committee is respectfully requesting the Rhode Island General Assembly to oppose any and all legislative proposals that would mandate expired teacher contracts that must continue at the existing terms and conditions. This is called the Evergreen Bill, and this is Senate Bill 0365, and I move that we join with them in opposing, supporting their resolution on opposing the Evergreen Bill.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The third one from the South Kingston School Committee is a resolution on the layoff, on the layoff notification date. The South Kingston School District urges the General Assembly to pass Senate Bill 0049 and House Bill 5066, moving the teacher layoff notice deadline from March 1st to June 1st, and I move that we support our school committee in, in this resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. Which brings us to the resolution adopted February 12th, 2013, by the North Kingston, North Smithfield, and East Greenwich School Committees in opposition to legislation proposing mandatory binding arbitration and contract continuation for teachers, and in support of legislation moving the teacher layoff notice deadline from March 1st to June 1st, 2013, at Senate 049, 2000, House 566, Acts Relating to Education are received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
I would move that we place this on file based on the fact that we just supported our own school committee in new business item D, Communication D, excuse me, on the same exact issues.
I second that motion, Carol.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Which brings us now to comments from interested citizens. This is the time if anyone would like to come up to the microphone. Seeing none? Sorry, Jim. Jim?
I guess our invitation, Steve, has gotten lost in the mail, but usually by this time, we've been invited by the University of Rhode Island President's Office to a home basketball game. And the reason I bring this up, I just can't imagine a more active and caring Town Council than we have been. Every meeting, every meeting with the legislature in public, the university could not have more greater support than this Town Council has put forward. So, not just asking for, you know, a nice evening at a basketball game, but we need to get the town in gown underway, and maybe with a lot fewer people, like the Town Council, yourself, and maybe Dr. Dooley and one other, so we can really get into the questions that have so much concern to this community and this school. So, I don't know who should be the point person to call the President's Office, Ella, but if you're not, I'm happy to, but I missed that invitation.
Jim, I just want to know if my daughter put you up to that? She's been hounding me for two weeks.
Oh, she has?
Because I think the last game, no, I'm teasing. I think the last game is like March 9th.
Oh, gosh, well, we still have time.
But the time is coming.
Better get on it, Jim.
My calendar is open.
I can call the President's Office if you'd like.
All right. And I didn't know if, Steve, did we have a usual date for the town in gown? Is there something we can move forward, or just move more rapidly on?
No, I think we, we'll need to make the phone call and see if we can come up with a couple of dates that the President will be available, that is acceptable with the council. We'll make that call, and I'll get it, get that information out to you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Another one? Go ahead.
Another one. Well, you know what a great athlete and swimmer I am, but forgetting my life-saving days.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And, I mean, really, this is wonderful news that the South Kingston Women's Swim Team captured the state championship a couple of weekends ago, and took over the reign from the LaSalle Rams after five straight years that they'd won it, so congratulations, kudos from all of us, I expect, here at the council.
Congratulations, girls. Great.
Had to be LaSalle. Yeah, had to be LaSalle.
Come on, Paul, you're on that side now.
No, I'm, yeah.
Not this side.
Both down, yeah. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you, Jim, for that posting. Just a few things that I'd like to mention is, I want to thank the Planning Board and the Economic Development Committee. We met with them on Tuesday, the Planning Board and Economic Development on Thursday, so a lot of work, good work is being done by both boards, and I want to thank all of the people who serve on those boards. And lastly, I just want to also mention two wonderful events, one that took place that I think the majority of the Town Council attended, it was the Animal Rescue League fundraiser, absolutely fabulous event. I don't know if anybody wants to speak, but kudos to the volunteers that give their heart and soul to that group.
It was a very nice affair, and at the Towers in Aragantet, four of us were there, and it was great. I think they raised some money, and...
I hope they did raise some money, because they did a beautiful job there, the amenities were very, very nice, and the cause was just a great cause, and people there were genuinely very happy with that event, so they did a great job.
And there were several local businesses, restaurants, breweries, whatever, that supported the evening, and thanks to them also.
Absolutely. Great event.
Excuse me. And then on Saturday was the Easter Sales fundraiser, which was put off due to the storm, was at Mary Havisham's, and again, just an outstanding event, and kudos to all of the volunteers that support our Easter Sales, which is located on Robinson Street. Again, many food vendors, and just another wonderful event in our community.
And again, Ella, just as Carl said before, our local businesses that continue to step to the plate for all these events, just what a terrific, terrific thank you has to go out to them. They continually ask, and they continually step to the plate.
Yep, you're right, Jim. So, with that said, we're going to move on to, unless there's further comments here at the table, Town Manager's Report.
The only item I wanted to report on is that we've provided the council with the February 14th miscellaneous report, a copy of the town's comprehensive annual financial report, or the CAFR. With that report is also a memorandum from Alan Lord, our Finance Director, providing a general summary of the terms and conditions presented within the CAFR itself. In terms of highlights, the general fund for the 2011, 2012 year finished with an operating surplus of $1,294,827. Of that portion, $935,000 was associated with revenues in excess of budgeted, budgeted amounts and under expenditures of around $358,000. The principal revenues that were in above budget amount was property tax collections were up for the year. In fact, property tax collections on the current year levy were approximately 99% of the entire levy was collected within that first 15-month period. The other areas were state aid, where we had underestimated what the value of the state aid would be in view of the fact that the budget was being prepared four months in advance of the state budget being adopted through the General Assembly. As far as our other funds are concerned, each of the 10 funds that are referenced within the memorandum from the Finance Director showed increase, increases in terms of net assets. This included the water fund showing net asset increases of $94,000, wastewater $59,000, solid waste $44,000. The healthcare reserve fund is at this point showing a little over $3 million for both the town and $3 million for the school, held in reserve to address healthcare and dental needs. Peastale Offices was also up, as well as Neighborhood Guild, our open space reserve. The last referenced fund is the school fund. The school fund showed a surplus for the 2011, 2012 year of $615,965. At this point, the fund balance for the, for the school fund stands at $1,916,000. A very, very good, solid position for the school fund. In addition, the town's general fund balance stands at 9.6 million, or about 13% of the current year budget. Council's policy statement relative to fund balance is between 12 and 16.6%, so we're close to the midpoint. We're certainly in good shape as far as each of the utilities are concerned. We're also showing within the report that we will be at about an 86% funded ratio on our retirement plans, and that we're making inroads as far as full contributions for the OPEG, OPEB Reserve Fund. And we'll have more discussions on that once the 2013, 14 budget is released at the end of this week. So, there's very good news within the audit itself. We're seeing many of the departmental revenues beginning to respond positively to, to, I think, increased activities within the community, and hopefully that trend will continue in the future. I'd be glad to schedule any type of meetings that the council would like for a more in-depth review with the, with the Finance Director if need be, to go over the audit, or I'd be glad to sit with any council member to address any concerns or questions that they may have.
Thank you, Steve. Questions here at the table? Jim?
Steve, what's the breakdown of the health reserve fund between the schools and the town?
It's about $3 million for the town and $3 million for the, for the, for the schools. So, there's about $6 million in the reserve right now. Cash flow contributions to that program are in the area, I'd say at around $9 million a year.
Thank you.
That's good news. So, thank you, Steve, and thank you too, Alan. Town Manager's Report, okay, Town Solicitors' Report.
Nothing to report on any cases unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Michael? Seeing none, thank you. He brings us to appointments.
Let's see, we have an appointment to the Waterfront Advisory Commission. We interviewed Bruce Laramie. He was interviewed on February 11th, 2013. His term would run for three years from today's date till February 25th, 2016.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
The term is until June 2015. Oh, okay. Okay, I strike that. His term goes till June 2013?
15.
15. Oh, okay, oh, I see, it went from June 2012. Okay, so he would be appointed from today's date till June 2015.
I see, second, second that a motion based on the amendment.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I think we're also going to move the Partnership for Prevention.
Are you both going to?
Yeah, Meg, while you had left the table, the Partnership for Prevention, I've been going to those meetings, and prior to that was Kathy Fogarty that served, but it's two Town Council members, ex-officio, so we're wondering if you would like to serve on that?
Yes, I would be interested.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we appoint Ella Whaley and Margaret Healy to, as Town Council ex-officio members to the Partnership for Prevention. The, the, both terms will expire June of 2015.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business item C. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Paul Bailey's Chrysler Dodge 425 10-Rod Road, North Kingston, for a 2013 Dodge Journey SE, in accordance with all bid specifications and amount not to exceed $18,790, and as further described in a memorandum from the building official to the Town Manager dated February 20th, 2013, and entitled "A Award of Bid Pool Car."
The town went through the normal bidding process, received 10 bids. Lowest bid that was received was from Paul Bailey Chrysler Dodge for the $18,790 for the Journey SE. There is no trade-in. $19,000 is available for that acquisition. Recommend council award as presented.
Thank you, Steve. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Which brings us back to License A, and I believe there is nobody here to represent TLC Coffee Roasters, Kingston, so if we could just move that forward to the next agenda, next meeting, that would be greatly appreciated.
Do we need to vote on that, or is that just a move to the next?
I don't think that we need to vote on that. Do we, Michael, to move it to the next meeting?
Yeah, no, we can simply just continue.
Thank you, Jim. So, next on the agenda is a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A1 to discuss matters pertaining to Orsillo, Tights, and Rich LTD personnel providing legal services to the town. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Susan?
Council President Whaley?
Yes.
Council Vice President McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilman Donnelly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Healy?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neill?
Yes.
Just for the record, we have to put on the record that a letter pursuant to statute was in fact sent and received.
Thank you, we're in executive session.